We can send push notifications. We also have the emergency alert service.
Sarasota County, yes.
So I mean, there's, there's plenty of it. You just need to get connected a little bit.
Yes. And one of the things that we always tell our residents is to, a lot of times, there's going to be a period of time where we may not have any communications for an extended period of time. It may happen. This is why it's always good to let others know what your plan is. If you have a plan, share it. Let them know where you're going to be, what you plan on doing. So at least they have some ideas. So there's not a friend to call. They know you're safe. They know you're okay. You told them ahead of time what you're going to be doing and what they can expect, especially if they lose communications, where you're going to be. So again, planning out ahead of time and letting them know if you do lose communications, this is what we're going to be doing at that time.
That's a good tip.
Yeah.
Evacuation centers.
Ah, yes.
What, what is that going to be like?
Uh, evacuation centers are, uh, that's some place, uh, that you would make reservations for. Uh, in other words, it's going to be very austere. It's going to be very basic. It, it is just like the term sounds. It's an evacuation center. Uh, this is where we bring people in, uh, to get them out of harm's way. That's the sole purpose. Uh, it's going to be very austere, uh, very bare bones. Uh, there's going to be, uh, sheltering and protection from the elements, uh, basic food, water, but not much more than that.
Yeah. So you need to bring some of those items. Don't just show up and...
Don't, don't show, show up and, uh, um, you know, don't plan making dinner reservations. Uh, you're not going to be served anything. And so whatever you could bring with you, just like your emergency kit, bring that with you.
And it's important Sarasota County operates those for us.
Yes.
A lot of those locations are here in Northport because we're away...
Everybody's so quiet. Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, October 7th, 2021. It's 4:00 PM and we're in the city chambers and I call the city commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present with us are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Luke, Vice Mayor Emmerich, and Commissioner Langdon. We also have our brand new city manager Fletcher, uh, city attorney Slaton, assistant clerk Giannelli, and our recording secretary Baker. Uh, I see police and fire in the back. So thank you very much. With that, um, this is actually his second meeting, but I'm going to ask Mr. Fletcher to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I'd like to lead. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was in a meeting yesterday with Commissioner Langdon and I was amazed. We stood and said the pledge to the flag and a couple of people at the table around me was like, oh my, I don't get to say that very much, very often. So it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to, to do that, uh, every single meeting that we have. So thank you, everyone. Uh, can I get a approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Langdon. Uh, to approve the agenda as presented, we're going to do a voice vote up here. Commissioner Langdon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have five zeros to approve the agenda. Do we have any public comment either online or in cards?
We do not.
Thank you very much. So we are on to item 321 dash 1489. Welcome to our new employees. City manager, would you like to introduce?
For the record, Christine McDade, Human Resources Director. It's my pleasure to stand before you every month to introduce formally some of our newest team members. When I call your name, if you'll please stand where you are. From the city manager's office, Economic Development Division, we have Randall Bowling, Market Research Analyst. From Fire Rescue, Christopher Moen, Life Safety and Fire Prevention Officer. In Human Resources, we have Angela Teknis, Staff Assistant One. From Parks, we have Daniel Charpentier. Waterfield, SLS Two. I had a little French there at the end. I'm sorry. I had to practice these. Lauren Cosmonovic, Recreation Ambassador. From Police, we have Jared Lewis, Community Service Officer. Michael McKeown, I'm sorry, Community Service Officer. Jacqueline Calderon, Police Officer. And Charles Yunkowski, Police Officer. From Public Utilities, we have Dakota Coombs, Waste Water Plant Operator Training. And finally, from Public Works, we have Lisa Hennig, Customer Service Rep One. And Vicki Sun, Customer Service Rep One as well. Welcome. So on behalf of the city, I wish you the best in your new roles and much success here. Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Welcome very much. Uh, when did these ladies and gentlemen begin?
They would have begun last month or so. We're always kind of like a month behind. So that's why I say I welcome some of our newest because we have actually newer people. That'll be on the next group.
All right. Well, welcome everyone. All right. We are going to go to item four, which are the proclamations and recognitions. So commissioners, let's go down below. And Mr. Fletcher, if you will join us for this first one, please, sir?
Yeah, thanks.
Go for it.
Push the button. Little green. No.
While we're trying to figure out the light, uh, I'd like to get a quick photo of this new team that we have. We had a sneak one and nobody was smiling.
Oh, no. All right. This is coming with warning. So smile.
Did we get it working?
Ms. Sandy, if you'll come down. This, is it working? Okay. And Mr. Fletcher, if you want to hand this to her, the photo op time, and then we will talk about what we're celebrating because I think it's several things we're celebrating.
Good afternoon and thank you all for attending here today. We do want to recognize and thank our Parks and Rec Department. They are the 2021 Sensational Award winner. 2020 Freedom Fireworks, first place, adaptation of an event. Second place, community engagement response to pandemic. Scoop the Poop Campaign.
It's always a winner.
It's always a winner. First place for the PR and media campaign and third place for the television program ad or PSA. Uh, thank you, Ms. Sandy, for all your hard work and dedication for yourself and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Sure. You want to do that now?
Thanks.
I was about this.
Sure. Uh, so this award is from the Florida Festival and Events Association. Uh, there were, uh, it's a plaque that has four different awards that we won. Um, two of them are for the, um, adaptation of event. Well, actually two of them are for the Freedom Fest Fireworks. That was from 2020 when we were in the midst of COVID and we had to change that event very quickly. Uh, we very much still wanted to have the event, um, and were able to modify that, um, in accordance with health and safety guidelines and had a very successful event. And I want to recognize Jonathan Wheatley, our recreation supervisor who was in charge. Uh, the other is for our Scoop the Poop Campaign. And that is a video and a campaign on reminding people that they need to clean up after their pets. Uh, and so that won several awards and, um, I want to recognize Laura Ansel, our marketing and outreach coordinator. And I think, uh, Laura, I would like to say just a couple of words about our, um, partner and our presenting sponsor for, for those events.
Thank you. So I would like to take the opportunity, you know, it's always difficult to find good people to stand by you sometimes, especially when there was so much unknown with the pandemic. And so I'd like to take a moment to recognize American Irrigation, who was our presenting sponsor for the 2020 Freedom Fireworks. Um, you know, they've been a good sponsor for us over the past several years and we appreciate their continued support. Um, I'd also like to recognize Angel Bartolata and his Rock Box Music School and Stage. Uh, Angel did not hesitate a single second when we asked him to turn Ice Ice Baby into Scoop Scoop Baby and it was a really wonderful collaboration. So we thank them for their enthusiasm and support.
Where can they find that video?
All right. So if you're looking for the video and you'd like to see it, it is on the city YouTube channel. So you can just look up Scoop Scoop Baby. You can also find it on the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. It's at Northport Parks and Rec. Um, and you can find it at www.cityofnorthport.com/scoop.
Can we get one?
Thank you.
Randy, can you get one of those, please?
All right. Scoop on three. One, two, three.
I did, I did the same thing, Laura.
I thought I got away with it.
Nah, you didn't. All right. Uh, this one is for national home-based business. So I believe Ms. Mel, you have a group of folks? I guess a very small group for small businesses. Come on, Bill.
Hey, this is running.
We know. We know.
And it's downhill, so you... Whereas two out of three companies of all sizes begin in a bedroom, garage, or closet. And whereas roughly 50% of businesses in the, in the country are home-based businesses. And whereas the city recognizes the great value of our home-based businesses that will grow, move to commercial sites, and hire even more workers. Whereas 70% of home-based businesses are successful within three years of their founding. And whereas there are hundreds of residents from all walks of life who own and operate home-based businesses in Northport, representing a large part of the future of economic development in Northport. And whereas many of Northport's most successful businesses began in homes. Now therefore, we, the city commission of the city of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 10th through October 16th, 2021, as National Home-Based Business Week. Thank you very much, Ms. Mel.
So, um, I was hopeful that Neil Zweibels would be here. He is with SCORE and had every intention, I believe, of being here. But we do have Bill Gunnin, who's with our Northport Chamber of Commerce. I do want to call recognition to the two, these particular two groups because, um, were it not for them, a lot of these small home-based businesses would get lost in the shuffle. And, uh, we know it's a little bit difficult sometimes to come into something the size of Northport and try to figure out what to do to get started in business. It's not easy. Our systems are large and we have a lot of people you have to talk to. And sometimes that can be confusing when you don't quite know what question to ask. So we have great groups that do support this. Our chamber among them, uh, the chamber supports our businesses in all kinds of ways. I'll let Bill speak to that. But in addition, SCORE is a place to start where you don't know where else to go. You have a great idea, but you don't know what to do. Don't even know how to write a business plan. Oh, yeah, you need a business plan. So, um, we, we're thankful to them for always serving us and always being there when we have a question or a need that needs to be addressed. And we want to thank, although they are here, maybe they're watching or maybe they'll tune in, um, we'd like to thank all of those who are instrumental in creating and maintaining and striving toward excellence in home-based businesses because we know that that's where most people have employment.
Ooh, it's a bike. I can't wait. No. Hello, everybody. I'm Bill Gunnin. I'm the executive director of the Northport Area Chamber of Commerce. And thank you, Mel, for inviting me. It's, uh, people don't realize that small business plays an instrumental part in our community, uh, economic development wise, and play a large part in employment in our community. But it's also people don't realize how important it is for, for the chamber and other economic development engines work with the city, uh, to make our community a business-friendly environment area. And we're very fortunate to have a good relationship with the city, uh, to promote business here in Northport. Uh, but probably the most important thing is, is Northport itself, our business community is very supportive of each other. That's, that's rare. Um, even though you have competitors, they're very supportive. So this is a great community for business to grow. Nothing's more exciting than seeing a home-based business succeed to the point where they go to a warehouse, to a storefront. For example, Lola Blue was a garage business. So congratulations to our home-based business. Thank you guys for recognizing them. And, uh, we enjoy this partnership and we're going to keep on growing here in Northport.
Thank you.
That's the one I did.
Got anybody representing the fire department in here tonight? Come on down, sir. Afternoon, gentlemen. Absolutely. Whereas Fire Prevention Week is October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, and is a vital public service with members of the Northport Fire Rescue, committed to ensure the safety and security of those living in, doing business, and visiting Northport. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risks from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risks of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Northport residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and know how to respond. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas residents should make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Northport first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, we, the commission of the city of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Protection Week.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'll make it short. Well, I'd like to thank the vice mayor and the mayor for having us and, uh, and, uh, commissioners as well as the city manager. Welcome. Welcome aboard. I'd like to thank everyone for, uh, making this possible and accepting this proclamation. In addition, I'd like to thank my team, the Fire Prevention Team, as well as the fire admin staff, and, um, uh, the men and women on the line every day, doing it, uh, doing the best they can with the resources they have, which you've provided. So, um, both active and retired. So we'd like to thank all of them and I appreciate your time. I appreciate the proclamation. And, uh, is there anything else? Remember the sound of a smoke detector and what it does.
What, what do you do for the alarms? What kind of programs do you do?
Uh, currently right now for the, uh, smoke detectors, uh, we were, uh, going out and changing the batteries and, uh, working with them to get, uh, new detectors, uh, placed in their homes. Uh, technically, we don't want to get too much into that because it could be involved in electrician. So, but we have changed batteries on a regular basis and we work with the homeowners to get the proper, uh, smoke detectors, uh, placed in their home on a regular basis. So, uh, we do work with that. And then we also have worked with the, uh, American Red Cross, uh, to, uh, have, start a program with them. But because of COVID, we've actually had to stop. So we're looking forward to get that going again. Uh, I believe we, uh, panned out the area of South Biscayne and were able to do 500 homes. Um, yeah, but we were only successful in doing approximately about 200. So because, uh, in almost every home we went into, not one person had a smoke detector. So it was very shocking to see. So, uh, where I come from, we would, uh, go out between sales of new homes and we would actually, um, make sure that they had working smoke detectors before they were able to sell their homes. So down the road, I would like to see us be able to do that through a city code initiative. So, uh, that's down the road. I gotta get, I get my ULDC and my city code for, through first. So, um, look forward to the projects and, uh, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, comment on the, the fire safety. It's nice to be on the other side of that. As a former teacher, I have to say that October with our fire inspections in the classrooms, it was a dreaded time. I mean, because of all the things that had to be removed for fire inspections. But I know that it, there was a reason for, for that. It's just, you know, take, take home all those things that aren't supposed to be out there. Yes, okay. Um, I think this is for Public Works. Anybody here from Public Works?
Mobility Week.
Mobility Week, right. Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe, multimodal transportation choices by hosting an annual collection of outreach events. And whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives, and/or implement new policies. And whereas Mobility Week is also an opportunity for individuals to explore the various transportation choices available to them. And think about how multimodal transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, and improves community health. And whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the city of Northport's key priorities of incorporating innovative transportation solutions, preparing the city of Northport for the changing future mobility patterns, and setting up a resilient transportation network. Now therefore, we, the city commission of the city of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 29th through November 5th, 2021, as Mobility Week. And I just wanted to, um, also piggyback off of that when it said that they have, how did they word it here? Uh, hosting, uh, an annual collection of outreach events. Actually, the Tour to Northport is, is one of them that the FDOT picked up as an event that they are hosting, um, or co-hosting by promoting it through their website. Um, and that's just what it says here. It's October 29th to November 5th. So we're really, really happy about that.
You don't have anything to do with that.
What's that? Oh. Yes, it's actually, it's, it's, uh, being sponsored by People for Trees, but, uh, it is cosponsored by the city because you did approve the grant for the police for that. So I'm just really proud of that, that we're, that Northport is out there for this.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, we're very pleased and proud, uh, for this proclamation. And it's a great segue into our mobility study that we're, uh, well into the midst of and will culminate in a coordinated, integrated mobility plan and associated mobility fee structure for the commission to adopt. So, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
You can't skate that way. I'm sorry.
They were almost gone.
Can you 500 here?
I'm not that short. Here we go. I think I'm a big dog and then I see myself in pictures. I see some pink shirts in the audience. Do we have folks who want to come down here and join me to recognize breast cancer awareness? Yeah. Here they come. Thank you, ladies. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas one in eight women in the United States will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. And whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of death among women. And whereas this year, an estimated 43,600 women will die from breast cancer in the U.S. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer in women, except for skin cancer. And whereas while most people are aware that breast, aware of breast cancer, many forget to take the steps to have a plan to detect the disease in its early stages. And whereas over 3.8 million breast cancer survivors are alive in the United States today. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to wear pink on Fridays in the month of October, wear pink ribbons throughout the month in recognition of breast cancer awareness, talk to their healthcare providers about regular clinical breast examinations, and practice monthly breast examinations. And witness whereof, we have here unto force that our hands and seal of the City of Northport, Florida, to be affixed the seventh day of October, 2021.
Thank you, great, thank you.
Well, we're always happy to accept this proclamation. And we do try to recognize breast cancer awareness every October. Just to raise awareness, we have some special things we do in our department. I'm really proud to have my team here. Got them to wear some pink today. We encourage everyone to wear pink on Fridays in the month of October. And I just wanted to mention, you know, this year especially was a year, and going back a little further, a year and a half, when I think people really, because of COVID and for a lot of reasons, practical reasons, availability and such, that people postponed appointments, people skipped appointments, weren't able to get to appointments for different medical tests and regular checkups and such. And breast cancer is one of those that early detection is a great preventive measure. And I just want to encourage everyone to try to take care of yourselves and make sure, especially with the mammograms, go back and get your appointments made. I'm guilty of some of my appointments for different things too. But it's time to try to get back on track because it's very important. The survivors will tell you. It's better to see every year, I see the numbers go up in survival. So, we all know our family members, friends, who have gone through this. And it's just really important to have those preventive measures in place. So, thank you for this proclamation. And we do have some pink bracelets we like to share with everyone. So, have a great evening. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Put my eyes on. So, I get to read about domestic violence. And you never know who was a former victim or survivor of domestic violence. And you're looking at one. That was my previous life, so I am proud to say I'm a survivor. At this time, I would like to see if there's anybody from Spark here. Please, come join me. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all ages, income levels, and anger, but most often women and children. And once started, the campaign of physical, psychological, economic, and domestic violence only gets worse, resulting in a heavy burden on society and families. Whereas 104,914 domestic violence offenses were reported in the state of Florida in 2019. And 151 incidences were reported in Northport. Whereas Safe Place and Ripe Crisis Center provides free services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault and their children in Sarasota and DeSoto Counties, seeks to stop the crime of domestic violence through the awareness and education. Now therefore, we, the City of Commission of the City of Northport, do by hereby proclaim October 21st as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about domestic violence, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of society can work together to better address domestic violence.
Just want to be briefly. So, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks to everybody, the hard job. It was not easy these years with the recent loss of this girl. My enforcement and everybody, thank you so much. Thank you. And on behalf of those victims of domestic violence, Spark want to say thank you, everybody. Every day is a new challenge for those who do not have a voice. For those, they feel hopeless. For those, they think they have no way out. But yes, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. There is a hope. There is a door open for them. Spark is there to give a hand to any victim of domestic violence and sexual abuse. They can contact us by phone, email, text messages. They can Google us. Yeah, the door is open for them. We are there for them. We have 24-hour hotline. We are open for them. And as an advocate, you have no idea how hard it is work with this victim with the pandemic. When you can see the pain they have. They have the mask, but seeing their eyes is enough to see the pain they're going through. All the advocates, we just want to say thank you. All the staff on Spark, we are there for them. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
National Manufacturing Day. Ms. Mel, you and your group want to come on down? We're going to have to meet all these lovely people too. Whereas manufacturing is a critical component to Florida's economic and accounts for 5.39% of the total output of the state and $2 billion in GDP for the Northport-Sarasota-Bradenton MSA in 2020. Whereas Northport manufacturers provide high-tech, high-skilled, and well-paid career options for our local workforce and employ over 16,000 people in our area. Whereas we should recognize the bright future that lies ahead for manufacturing in our area while applauding the innovation, determination, and creativity of our local manufacturers. And whereas the City of Northport, Florida, supports and joins in this national effort to help America's manufacturers do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. And wherefore, we recognize the importance of local manufacturing in our community and local economy. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 1st of 2021 as National Manufacturing Day. Ms. Mel?
Again, this is a great proclamation to read for this month of October. Never more has it been apparent that our workforce has got to be supported. These times of COVID, these difficult year, last two years really, where people have struggled to keep manufacturing plants open, keep the supply lines strong, make sure that we have workers that are skilled and able to go to work and then when they're at work, to receive fair wages or above-average wages. It's all the more apparent now that that needs to be happening. And we need to support one of the largest industries in the United States. Manufacturers Association, Sarasota Area Manufacturers Association, is kind to us as a partner. They support the things we do here in Northport and in Sarasota County. We have partners here with us to help celebrate today. Several of them are from our education community and they're great partners to have. I have with us, I'm going to get, I hope I don't slaughter names here, but we have Sam Aldrich, who is the Engineering Program Manager at State College of Florida. And why don't you come up, Bill? We have, of course, all of you are going to know Mike Indy, our local guy here at Suncoast Technical College. Mike is head of our program here in Northport. Come on up, Mike. I'm really proud to have David Ferguson here with us today. He's made a little bit of a trip to share time with us. Dave, come on up. Dave is with Florida Makes, which is one of the associations working with our manufacturers. He goes in to help our manufacturers with quality issues, technical issues, you name it. He's there for our manufacturers. We've been friends now, Lowby, so I don't know, six or seven years now. I'm thinking, we've been traveling around together. Bill Gunnin, of course, we cannot forget Bill, who is always supportive of all of our businesses in Northport. And I think what's important is that we can't do any of this without, I mean, there's no component here that, it's kind of like manufacturing. If there's something missing, it doesn't work, right? So, you know, we have people who recruit industry, business in particular. And you all know from the Camoin Report that manufacturing is a big deal here for Northport. It's what we're really set up to do, what the founding fathers set aside for us in the way of planning and of how to use our activity centers well. But in addition to that, it's a place where we put our kids in school and we teach them that they need to learn and expand their horizons. And part of that is the process of learning about trades and skilled trade. And so, that pipeline works right straight on through the engineering college, through the technical college. And then certainly, when they get into the real world and they're out there with their own businesses or whatever, then solving their own problems. So, we're so appreciative of our partners. And if they want to speak to their workforce issues or whatever.
Okay. I want to thank you for, on behalf of State College of Florida and Engineering Technology and Construction Management Technology Programs, we are more than pleased to be able to do our part and be a part of that organization that Mel has brought up. And we just, we just thank you for the proclamation and for recognizing Manufacturing Month.
Hey, I want to echo that and, let me just bring that up just a little bit. Echo that and for STC, Suncoast Technical College, both campuses, obviously here in Northport, we support manufacturing with two programs as well as three programs up at the main campus in Sarasota. So, manufacturing is growing more and more in this region. And we hope to be able to help train that workforce and provide those incoming businesses and employers with the skills that they need and help reduce that skills gap. So, thank you to the city, the Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mel, always helping us at STC in Northport and supporting us in workforce development.
I also would like to thank everyone for supporting manufacturing. Manufacturing is so important in our community. Every dollar spent in manufacturing brings about at least $3 back to the community. Workforce is a tremendous problem with all the manufacturers I am visiting. We're doing all we can with our partners to train our workforce, not just those out of college, but those coming right out of high school. It's really important that they understand manufacturing is not dull and dirty. It's a pretty cool job. So, there are a lot of really amazing manufacturers in our community. And again, just want to thank you all for supporting us, for supporting them. And, you know, I don't really have anything else to say. Thank you very much.
Speaking, I think for... Oh, there you go. If anyone is interested in finding out about jobs in the area, about how to train for jobs in the area, and I could go the long list of, there are more partners than this up here. But these are our local folks. So, State College of Florida has an engineering program. There is, they are located in Venice, the engineering program here. And so, we are, we have a gym and a lot of people don't know it. And so, we're really proud of the fact that State College has put their engineering school here. And it's a feeder to University of Florida, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? So, you would contact State College of Florida of Venice, the Venice campus, to speak with the program manager, who's Mr. Aldrich. The other program that we've got locally is our Suncoast Technical College, where you could just pick up the phone, call STC, and it's right here in Northport. And they have a secondary campus at Beneva in Sarasota County. So, there are two capabilities, two possibilities for you to do that here. Mike Indy.
Okay, is there anyone from IT that can come up here? I'm assuming that's what this, who's getting this award? Anyone from IT that can come up here?
Cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity. Oh, and please, okay. See, I'm learning something too about this. All right. Great. Whereas we recognize the vital role that technology has in our daily lives and the future of our nation, whereby many citizens, schools, businesses, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks and critical infrastructure sections are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas the Internet users and our information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attacks and significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud. And whereas the City of Northport Information Technology Division, in conjunction with the City of Northport Police Department, provides a comprehensive approach to help enhance the security of this city. And whereas the city desires to bring greater awareness around these issues to both city staff and the citizens of Northport. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month. There you go. Thank you.
As everybody knows, the world is becoming more and more dependent upon technology. It's inevitable. And so, there is no magic button that's going to automatically make everybody safe. So, it takes everybody doing their part.
it takes everybody doing their part to make sure we all stay safe through our networks. So I'd like to thank the City Commission for helping us get the word out, just to put that awareness out there and help us to make sure everybody understands that, you know, it takes everyone to secure our networks. Thank you.
Yes.
Laura Ross? All righty. This is to Laura Ross in recognition of her personal commitment and dedication to the City of Northport while serving on the Environmental Advisory Board from September 24th, 2019 through September 24th, 2021. Thank you very much, Ms. Laura.
A certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Richard Suggs. I think his family are somewhere in Tennessee right now, so he could not be here, but we want to recognize him for his personal commitment and dedication to the City of Northport while serving on the Community Economic Development Advisory Board from September 24th, 2017 through September 24th, 2021, presented the seventh day of October 2021. I also want to mention that in addition to his service on C-DAP, Rich has also been very involved in the chamber, on the board, on various committees focused on economic development. He may be better known for his talk radio show on WKDW, but he has been a real asset to this city, and we'd like to thank him for all of that.
A certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Jody Bond in recognition of your personal commitment and dedication to the City of Northport while serving on the Community Economic Development Advisory Board from September 10th, 2019 through September 10th, 2021, presented the seventh day of October 2021.
Thank you very much. That was a lot of good recognition. So thank you, everyone, for being the part, doing the part that you have within our community. City manager, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, mayor.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have anything?
Just a public comment, mayor.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Thank you very much. So it is 4:49. We are adjourned. Thank you.